Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'd like to open the meeting, call the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee to order. Madam Secretary, please call the role.
Chief Person Clark?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. Hoey?
Here.
Three present.
I'd like to recognize the other members of the school committee who are here, Ms. Connie Martin and also Chief Equity Officer Latifah Phillips. So, thank you. And I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Phillips.
Sure. Thank you, School Committee Member Clark and School Committee Members for being here. This meeting was called from our last school committee session where we were discussing the racism reporting protocol. And in that session, we had talked about the importance of families and community also being involved in addressing racism within our community. And so, one of the starting points for the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, we wanted to start with sharing with you the Portrait of a Graduate Initiative, which has been a big initiative for our district that began in January. And the reason we wanted to start here is because a lot of our learnings are coming out of this initiative. What we're finding through our student engagement, our family engagement, our community engagement. And so, not only are we having information coming in, but this process is also empowering family and community and building a new framework for how we engage. And so, if that's okay, we would like to share with you about this process and then discuss how you'd like us to move forward with going more deeply into some of the initiatives in our office. And so, in the presentation, I did share out some of the key performance indicators, just to keep us focused on the work that we are doing. We'll tie into some of these performance indicators such as family, you know, community satisfaction, language access, school site council participation. All of this is part of our, you know, strategy for strengthening family and community engagement and for addressing the inequities within our public schools. I do have my district team here, you know, and community team with us, and I have representing Lowell High School, Petra Farias, who is here in front of the gate with me. And so, after we talk about the Portrait of a Graduate, these are some key initiatives coming out of our Equity Office that perhaps you will want further discussion on. I'm not sure how that works. We can try to troubleshoot it. Venak, do you want to try to troubleshoot the video over here? Thank you. Okay, and this is also being livestreamed on LTC as well. All right, so these are some of the initiatives that are coming out of the Equity Office based on the feedback and the analysis that we're doing. And we can always, you know, our hope is that this will be a continued conversation after today. So that takes us to the Portrait of a Graduate, and we are at the 50% portrait. So, that means that based on the input we've received, we have created, you know, we've analyzed our thinking and come up with what we believe the skills, mindset, and competencies of a graduating Lowell Public Schools senior should be equipped with. And so, I'd like to take you through what this project is, the input we've received, the teams, and then stand for any questions. So if we can go to the slide, what will our students know and be able to do? So, the Portrait of a Graduate process, and this is funded through the Bar Foundation, this is a community-driven process that will define success for our Lowell Public Schools students. And we emphasize community-led because we're recognizing that the public schools are for the whole community, and it's not just up to us within the schools to determine what is important for schools to leave or for students to receive within their education. So we are looking at the values, knowledge, skills, and work habits that our students will need to thrive in a 21st century. And we've really placed a focus on hearing from our community that has been marginalized or that we haven't heard from before. So as each of my team members speak, you'll see that we've really made an effort to analyze existing data, gather new data, to conduct interviews, surveys, focus groups, and then collectively present the direction that we believe our district should be going in. And so again, the slide here demonstrates, you know, the process of observing, of researching, identifying, and creating. I think I jumped right in, but I also want to mention that this incredible partnership was done with Project Learn and with Working Cities, and it has been a really wonderful partnership in helping us to bring this initiative to completion. So sometimes in talking about this process, you know, some ask, what are the overarching questions? Well, we wanted to pause and say, what is the purpose of a high school graduation? You know, what is the purpose? Why do our kids go to school? What are they learning for? And then how can we provide equitable access for all students to the learning experiences? And how do we make learning engaging and relevant? What will it take for learning to be engaging and relevant? And then how do we ensure our students are fully prepared for college and/or career, whichever pathway that they choose? So, the portrait can seem abstract, so we did share a sample of some of the completed portraits, just to help people visualize what this will look like for our district when the process is complete. And so, before we jump into the details, I would like to talk about who we are and...
I'd like to invite, Elsie, would you like to talk about who we are?
Thank you, Latifah. Good evening, everyone. This has been a really dynamic, and as Latifah mentioned, a community-driven process. So we've been pretty thrilled to be able to engage partners from all areas of our community and all neighborhoods. So our design team consists, of course, of our central office at Lowell Public Schools with Latifah and Venak, Abraham Osorio, of course, from the high school. We're really fortunate to have full commitment through new head of school, Michael Theato, and Petra Farias, and Karen Cassidy is one of our wonderful college and career counselors. Lauren Campion from the Career Academy has been heavily involved, along with Sean McCarthy from Working Cities is a key stakeholder with us. Also Juan Carlos Rivera from the Boys and Girls Club. We knew it was really important to have them as part of our design team. And Yung Ju Choi from Coalition for a Better Acre, Felicia Sullivan, who's a part of our community but also works with Jobs for the Future out of Boston, and consults with us, as well as myself, and Shamir Rivera Quintal, who's now over at Coalition for a Better Acre. Our teacher team has been led by Karen Cassidy, and we really had a group of outstanding and super committed teachers work over the summer. And Petra's going to speak a little bit more about the type of work that they did, but they've just been really powerful and incredible group. We have one of them here tonight who will also speak, Ralph St. Louis, working with Karen, Ari Sullivan, Kendra Bauer, Maggie Moriarty, Deanna Sanford, and Tara, and I'm losing her last name, but she's been over at the LeBlanc School. Our student team is powerful. This group of students worked on collecting data, and Abraham will tell you more about it, but really from a number of sources, not just student surveys, but focus groups. They worked with student-led teams, which Abraham really worked, you know, integrally with our students. And we have a student here tonight with us, which is wonderful. So he's going to tell you more about Jada Turner, Mableen Ntoro. This is...
Who, right?
No.
Emmanuel.
Emmanuel. Thank you, Emmanuel. Emmanuel, I'm sorry you're not on this board. You should be. Celia, and also from our community and family teams. You can see, Venak Ken has been working super hard with the African Community Center, Lowell Education Justice Alliance, the Portuguese team led by Fatima and Latifah's office, Lowell, excuse me, the Latinx Community Center for Empowerment, Coalition for a Better Acre, the Boys and Girls Club, and Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association have all been reaching out into their communities. So we've really seen this as sort of the interconnected circles that are working together. And Latifah Phillips and Sean McCarthy, Christine McCall from the City, Danielle McFadden from the Chamber, Allison Lamy from the Lowell Plan, Peter Farkas from Mass Hire, and myself, we've been part of the business and industry team, really reaching out to collect some data there. So you'll hear more about it, but it's really been a dynamic and exciting process.
Thank you, Elsie. And the reason we share this with you is because when we think about sharing out other initiatives and partnering, this process really is setting some of that foundation for working broadly across other industries, schools, and families. So, activity to date, areas of engagement. You know, our work has primarily been with the high schools. I mean, in Lowell High, 186 teachers out of 230 have provided input into this. Over 1,500 public school students have provided input, whether it's survey, focus group, or portrait reflection activity. Over 150 business and industry leaders have provided input on, you know, what would they like to see in a graduate from our public schools, their future, you know, their future workforce. And then, family and community members, and this number says 50-plus, but it's much higher than that. And as we complete this process, we'll see that it's hundreds. But again, a lot of what we're doing with our racism reporting protocol, with our anti-racism training, all of this is coming out of this process, our learning from this community process. And so with that, I'd like Petra Farias to introduce our teacher and also the work that, the role that the teachers have had in the portrait.
And thanks very much to all of the school committee members for having me tonight. So, yeah, as Ms. Phillips pointed out, we are really excited, really the entire LHS community, to be participating in this work. As was stated just a moment ago, it's really a reflection of the interest and excitement for the work that 80% of our teachers have participated. This has been an ongoing process, and we are just as happy to know that it will continue to be an ongoing process. I have to say that the, you know, getting to 50% of this portrait is very exciting, but it's really all about the process of getting in there. And I know it's somewhat cliche to say it's about the journey, but it really is. Our students, our teachers, so many surveys have been conducted with alums, with current students, with the faculty, with community members, and families. And I will say that at the core of this, the teachers have really been the driving force behind this work since last year, straight through the summer, and right up through today. So, they're excited to continue, to get to the 100%, but not just to reach the end of this project, but really we see this project, developing this portrait, as a catalyst for change. And I have to say, in talking with many of the faculty involved in it, many of the same people that you saw on this list are involved in all kinds of equity work and change work. For example, they're involved in the School Climate and Culture Committee, they're involved in ILT, early college work, just so many great initiatives happening at the school right now. And there's tremendous overlap and intersection with all of that work, and all of it is about moving LHS forward. So personally, I'm very excited about that, too. One last thing I would say is, it may be obvious, but I don't think it can be overstated, that in working on the development of these skills and mindsets and attributes of what do we want our graduates to be, what do we want them to know, what we've realized as a learning community is that, you know, we need to work on perseverance. We, in this process, are developing and increasing and improving our own critical thinking skills, our cultural awareness absolutely, building trust within our smaller community, and creating, developing capacity to build trust among our larger faculty and administrators within the LHS community. And all, at the core of this, POG work is equity. It is about access to opportunity for not some of our students, not some of our teachers, but for all of them. As someone who is still relatively new to Lowell High, I'm very proud to have come here and had the chance to do this work because it is cutting-edge, it is dynamic, it is innovative, and it's a lot of hard work. And the level of commitment that I've seen, both at the central office staff, with Elsie's staff, all of the community members involved in this work, and as I said at the outset, from the faculty, there is a lot of hope. There's progress that has been made, and our students see hope, and we're already benefiting from this work. So it will continue after the 50%, after the 100%, and I think it's just been a great process for all of it, for all of us. Thank you.
That will be helpful. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me well? Okay. My name is Ralph St. Louis. I'm a teacher at Lowell High School. I teach biology and chemistry. And I was one of the teachers to be working on the Portrait of a Graduate teacher team. And I just wanted to talk to you guys about the work that we did throughout the summer and up until now, and we are constantly meeting, working as hard as possible for our students. Would you mind skipping to the next slide, the one after that? As a science teacher, I always like to talk about data before I put the information out there. So, a couple of notes for this data is that we were working with an educational institution that is able to look at and gather and aggregate data from across the nation, and we were comparing ourselves on a variety of metrics. For our teacher survey, our 10th grade student survey, our alumni survey, it went through the panorama matrix, and we were able to compare ourselves nationally with rural and urban schools and really see how we stand relative to other schools that are comparable to us. One of the pieces of data that I would like to point out in particular, or a few pieces of data, is within our teacher survey, you can see that within our teacher survey, 86% of teachers felt that students would be unlikely to try again after failing. And that is a startling number, especially as an educator who really wants to know that our students can persevere at all times, which is why we were able, or which is one of the reasons why we were able to pull out perseverance as one of our key competencies and skills. You can also see that when we were, we implemented a student lesson across our school and all of our English classes, and one of the things that all of the students came up with was 36% of all students independently came up with the word "hardworking" and determined 18% determination. A third of our students have actualized the words to know that they want to exhibit that quality, that characteristic of a 21st century learner. And we want to make sure we provide that and enable that skill within our students. You can see that under the family survey, 71% of families indicated LHS lacks motivating lessons, and it's an area of focus. 71 responded that they value diversity. And under our 10th grade survey, you can see that our students are not really, 86% of students, these are students reporting, and it was about a, like, 400 to 500 student, oh no, it was like 400 student count for this one, 86% responded that they do not generally talk about ideas from class outside of school, which is, that breaks me. As a teacher, I would love to see my students pulling what we learn in class and bringing it to the home and having conversations about it. 76% felt that they did not matter, much as others at LHS. And even under our alumni and former student survey, our goal was really to reach out to all stakeholders and all people who have experienced education within LPS. They said that 74% of them said they did not feel adequately prepared for the future. And so, all of these pieces of information coming together informed us, can you go back one slide? Thank you, informed us to pick these themes that came from every single survey set. We only showed you a piece of the information, there was so much more, like, so much more. We saw that perseverance, as I mentioned earlier, we want to instill that skill within our students. Critical thinking is a crucial 21st century skill for our students to display in the workforce and in our community. Cultural awareness, we want to make sure that our students are able to respond adequately to our changing environment and our changing demographics. Also, community trust, that was the biggest theme that came out. When we compare ourselves nationally for sense of belonging within our school system or within, I'd say, LHS, we rank in the bottoms percentile for our school districts. There is a lack of belonging for our students. And again, as a teacher, I want to make sure that before a student can learn, they must have the environment to allow them to learn. And if you don't feel wanted or you belong in the space, it becomes even more challenging for a student to show that perseverance, to show that critical thinking. And last but not least, equity, we want to make sure our students are advocates, are agents of change, and have the capacity to advocate for themselves and others. And with all of these skills together, we believe that our students will be successful in the 21st century.
Great. Thank...
Just a couple of questions about the survey. So I, and I know you broached this a little bit with the community trust and making that national comparison. Is there a document or some backup documentation that we could see the comparison on all those different measures to the national norms?
Yes.
Because I think that would be, I would agree with you. I think that's a really important component, and I honestly don't even know what I'm hoping for, but it would be interesting to see how that kind of compares against national numbers. And then my second question was just the timing of this. When did we administer this survey?
So, our teacher survey, actually, I don't quite remember teacher survey. The 10th grade survey was done around September. The alumni survey was, like, everything was beginning of school year to...
This year, though.
I think it was in the spring. The 10th grade survey was in the spring.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct about that.
And the teacher survey was in the fall, following the summer work of the teacher team.
But they were both after March?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just thinking, there's a certain sense of alienation and isolation that probably was borne out in this survey that was absolutely valid, but...
Yes. That was a caveat and a point of conversation when we were looking at the data to see, to note that the timing of the survey and everything that was happening nationally. But what I was told was basically, we still need to take our students at face value and recognize that they have been sharing experiences with us for a very long time now, and they want to be finally heard in full force.
And I think if we look at the alumni survey as well, you know, the alumni are reflecting on their experiences, which was prior to March, and so we were seeing some trends that way. But thank you, Mr. St. Louis, for your work and the teacher work. The teacher work really is amazing. And again, I hope you're seeing one of the reasons we wanted to talk about this, because as we're receiving this data, that's starting to set the foundation, like even with the sense of belonging. Why don't students feel a sense of belonging? Where does culturally responsive education come into that? Where does anti-racism come into that? So, thank you for that.
I would...
You can just leave it there. And I also, Karen Cassidy wasn't able to be here with us, and she has really been a driver of this work, so I did want to acknowledge her publicly for that. So if we could move to the teacher team, I mean, I'm sorry, the student team, because again, we don't want to just take one group's word for it. We were trying to really have an inclusive process.
Thank you. Thank you. Next slide, please.
If you can introduce yourself for the record.
Abraham Osorio, I am the School Climate Specialist, and I'm joined here by my co-facilitator, Manuel Wappo. So I, and I know you broached this a little bit with the community trust and making that national comparison. Is there a document or some backup documentation that we could see the comparison on all those different measures to the national norms?
Yes.
Because I think that would be, I would agree with you. I think that's a really important component, and I honestly don't even know what I'm hoping for, but it would be interesting to see how that kind of compares against national numbers. And then my second question was just the timing of this. When did we administer this survey?
So our teacher survey, actually, I don't quite remember teacher survey. The 10th grade survey was done around September. The alumni survey was, like, everything was beginning of school year to...
This year, though.
I think it was in the spring. The 10th grade survey was in the spring.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct about that.
And the teacher survey was in the fall, following the summer work of the teacher team.
But they were both after March?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just thinking there's a certain sense of alienation and isolation that probably was borne out in this survey that was absolutely valid, but...
Yes. That was a caveat and a point of conversation when we were looking at the data to see, to note that the timing of the survey and everything that was happening nationally. But what I was told was basically, we still need to take our students at face value and recognize that they have been sharing experiences with us for a very long time now, and they want to be finally heard in full force.
And I think if we look at the alumni survey as well, you know, the alumni are reflecting on their experiences, which was prior to March. And so we were seeing some trends that way. But thank you, Mr. St. Louis, for your work and the teacher work. The teacher work really is amazing. And again, I hope you're seeing one of the reasons we wanted to talk about this, because as we're receiving this data, that's starting to set the foundation, like even with the sense of belonging, why don't students feel a sense of belonging? Where does culturally responsive education come into that? Where does anti-racism come into that? Thank you for that.
I'll...
You can just leave it there. And I also, Karen Cassidy wasn't able to be here with us, and she has really been a driver of this work. So I did want to acknowledge her publicly for that. So if we could move to the teacher team, I mean, I'm sorry, the student team, because again, we don't want to just take one group's word for it. We were trying to really have an inclusive process.
Thank you, thank you. Next slide, please.
If you can introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Abraham Osorio. I am the School Climate Specialist. And I'm joined here by my co-facilitator, Emmanuel Wapo. Next slide. Thank you. So we began the student engagement component of the Portrait of a Graduate in the spring by facilitating a host of student-led virtual focus groups in efforts to collect data on student experience. We were able to facilitate six focus groups with about six to eight students in each session. The areas that we assessed were academic supports, academic engagement opportunities, culture and climate, community participation, and relationship building. After we collected the data, we then compiled it into portfolios for the student analysis process, which students immediately moved into. At that point, students analyzed and coded the data to identify the major themes that Manny will now speak to.
Sorry. Hello, my name is Emmanuel Wapo. And some of the key components that my group and I spoke on was community engagement. And we need to focus on creating student engagement and teacher engagement to make the school building and just the school climate a much more harmonious environment, because nowadays, we have students who dread coming to school, and we have teachers who unfortunately love what they do, but it's hard to bring the students back together because the students don't feel motivated anymore. And we can include students on a variety of things. We can include them on ethnic clubs and communities and organizations. We can also bring them in on athletics, liberal arts. We can include them on music, show choir, and many other clubs and activities, even anime, just anything to make the school environment just so much more, you know, just so much more impactful for these students' lives. Because being a senior and having just different topics in school to already go to is already stressful as it is, and you need to make sure that kids have that drive to come to school every day. Because without school, we won't have the necessary skills to go on to our future. We need to also focus on communication. And it's the same as engagement, but now there is communication to let students know of these collectives and these clubs that can include them on different things. Because until this year, I didn't even know we had an Asian collective and organization. I didn't even know that we had an LGBT communitative team that includes all students of the LGBTQ+ I didn't even know that we had a collective for even student council. And I'm one of the kids who are more involved in the school with athletics. And I didn't even, I wasn't even aware that we had an actual student council. I thought it was just senior offices. So if we have more awareness, we can communicate more to the students, and we can communicate more to the teachers as well. Because it's not just the students and that school building, it's also the teachers and the staff. And if all, and if everyone is informed on what needs to happen and what needs to get done, then we can move into a brighter future for Lowell High. And finally, staff diverse, not finally, but staff diversity, the difference in the teacher to the student population is not reflected in the slightest. I just recently had my first black teacher in my sophomore year. It was actually Ralph St. Louis, who was actually my first black teacher, and Brianna Loughlin. And from kindergarten till five, all the way till I was 16, I've just started having more other teachers besides the Caucasian community. And other students may never even have that chance. And when we talk about sensitive topics, like in freshman year, we read The Catcher of the Rye, and in sophomore year, when we read To Kill a Modern Bird, when you have those sensitive books who bring up sensitive topics, some students of color don't feel comfortable addressing those books because in that climate, the class is allowed to say a variety of things. So just recently, that the school mandated that under no circumstances should the N-word be said in schools, but that was for this year alone. Years before, years prior, there wasn't even any black teachers. And those type of situations were very uncomfortable. And if we just, not just black students and black teachers, but also Asian students and Asian teachers, LGBT students and teachers, just anyone and anyone in your corner that speaks for you. Because if I didn't have the teachers that I did to make me feel comfortable coming to school and reading those sensitive books, I honestly would have dropped out of that classes and moved to a different class instead of the regular English classes, because I know just how sensitive those books are. And I have a way to advocate for myself. Some students don't have that avenue or that confidence to advocate for themselves. But if we have someone who's advocating for you, it's much more easier to bring up sensitive topics that you don't even feel comfortable saying to your friends or even your teachers or your parents. So it's just, I think, staff diversity is just a big one that we really need to nail into the coffin, because we need all inclusion and we need all people to come at the school. Because in this city, we preach about diversity. But if we don't have diversity where it matters in the school building, where our young leaders are being fine-tuned, then we really can't claim what we, we can't really, we really can't claim diversity, now can we? And last but not least, for sure, is skill building. Skill building, we just, like Mr. Ralph St. Louis said before, in school, we fine-tune students to make sure they have the necessary skills to go on to the 21st century. Because although some trigonometry classes are impactful and good for you, students need skills such as just to understand how to do their simple taxes, understand how to open a bank account, understand how to start their mortgage right after high school, if, right after college, if they seem necessary and so fit. And in order to have these skills, we need to really drill in skill building.
Next slide, please.
We need critical thinking skills. These are very important, because in life, this is a quote, "In life, you're going to have a lot of people and a lot of different things. So you should have the ability to discern who should listen to you and who should ignore and use common sense to make your own path and not get guided by others." We need task-oriented skills. We need real-life technical skills. We need critical thinking skills. We need to understand stress management and self-care skills, especially when we're going into more stressful times such as college. We need students to understand that they're not alone and that they should have right coping mechanisms. And unfortunately, some students fall to some more dangerous coping mechanisms, such as drugs. And in order to truly build true leaders, they need to not be swayed by what everyone else is doing. We need to have communication and social skills. And we also need to understand that what we do right now will impact us for the future. And we need to just have time management skills as well. And I think with all these four main topics, we should really drill this in to the next meeting or just hopefully into the future, even this year, I pray, because I want to make sure that we have these things so that I know for sure when I come back to Lowell for my son and even my grandsons, that this home that has welcomed me in open arms will welcome them into open arms. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. So from that analysis, we were able to identify these skills that you see here, that the students deem imperative for lifelong success. And I also want to emphasize that every phase of the student engagement process was student-led and student-focused to ensure that student voice impacted and informed action steps. Thank you.
Thank you. And so you can start to see a couple of trends. So we looked at the teachers, we looked at the students, all independently. Quickly, Venatkin will tell us about the community process, because it's still in process right now. And once that data is complete, I know that the community would like to come and present on their, on their data. And I'm trying to see, oh, here it is.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Venatkin. I work with Family Engagement and Linguistic Access in the Equity Office. So when we were developing ideas for what we want to research in this project, we of course thought about teachers and students, but we also thought about where our student body go at the end of the day. When they leave their school buildings, their education ultimately brings them back to their homes and their communities and their neighborhoods. And so we really thought it was necessary that we understand the perspective of our different communities that make up our one Lowell Public School community. So to do this work well, we decided to turn to a specific kind of research, critical participatory action research, or CPAR. To sum up, CPAR is research conducted in a community, by a community, and for a community. So to do this work well, we partnered with many of our different diverse organizations, the African Community Center, Boys and Girls Club, Coalition for a Better Acre, Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association, the Latinx Community Center for Empowerment, the Lowell Education Alliance, and a homegrown LPS Portuguese team. And together, each of our different community members are using different methodologies that fit their community, which include interviewing, focus groups, surveying, and arts-based research. And this last one is very important, because it helps disempowered communities speak back to power using arts, in which other methods don't necessarily empower them. And then in each of those communities, we're targeting different facets of the population, including business owners, community leaders, neighborhoods, alumni, parents, and youth groups. And then all of the research partners together are tackling one centralized question. What do our communities say about the value of an LPS education? Right now, each of our different groups are in different stages of the research process. Some are collecting data, some are codifying data, and some are analyzing data. And so at the end of this process, each of these organizations will be able to report back to us what their communities say. And in so doing this, our community partner organizations are going to be able to speak back to institutions of power, which typically and historically have not heard from them. And so that's what our CPAR process is going to be looking like.
Thank you. And in thinking about the importance of the process and not just the product, it's this kind of process that we're hoping can outlast just this project. And so when we start talking about things like, we need to talk about racism in our community, now we have different groups that we can go to who can say, "I know how to convene my community, I know how to bring input back to you." So the last area we'd like to share out is the business community. And let me see, did I bypass it? Okay, industry data. And if we could have Sean McCarthy.
Good evening. My name's Sean McCarthy. I'm the Director of Working Cities Lowell. So we've said the word process a lot tonight. I think tonight, we, the whole goal of this was to connect with the stakeholders of Lowell Public Schools. And certainly, industry stakeholders are important to the Lowell Public Schools, as in they will be the future employers of our students. So we built a kind of multifaceted process for outreach and engagement. We connected with our local business leadership, Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce, City of Lowell Economic Development Office, Mass Hire, Greater Lowell Workforce Board, and the Lowell Plan, LDFC. We had brainstorm and focus group sessions with those groups and that was the leadership of those groups. We held a business luncheon to focus on our survey results, which I'll get into in a second, at El Jefe. And we had a very diverse group of industry representatives from Greater Lowell that represent different high-growth and large industries in the area, and also at different levels of their careers. And we also developed a survey, and the main goal of our survey was to really touch two things. We wanted to connect with large industries, meaning largest in employment, and we wanted to connect with growing industries. So in Greater Lowell, that's, you know, in terms of large, we have higher ed, we have education, we have municipality, we have healthcare, manufacturing, and then growth, we have high-tech and other professional and technical industries. And we also wanted to connect with, so we wanted to learn the needs and skills and mindsets and knowledge that employees need to have going into those industries. We also wanted to connect with people at different stages of their career, whether it be leadership, whether it be entry level, middle management, or just field working. And so we distributed that, and we got a decent amount of responses, and we learned a lot. So if we can, the meat of our survey was really to find out what the top skills, what the top knowledge, and what the top mindsets are for industries and different levels of people's careers that people need to be successful post-graduation, whether that's in college or career. So for top skills, we arrived at communications, empowerment of others, and critical thinking, and then a good list of other skills. Next slide. Top knowledge, we had technology. I think everyone can agree with that. That's important these days. Cultural competency, lived experience, and then a list of others. And mindsets, patience, empathy, and strong work ethic. So we talked to our community, we talked to our students, we talked to our teachers, and then we talked to our industries, and we saw some trends along those lines, communication, technology, critical thinking, and more. So going forward, we'll dig deep into our data that we have. We'll probably do some more deeper dives into what, finding out what these things mean for each industry and for different folks and different levels of their career.
Thank you, Sean. So this takes us to the 50%, right? So we've taken all of this data, and we said we've got to analyze it and put it into, you know, the portrait. And so these are the five areas that we have landed on. We believe that were the trends that we saw most across the different stakeholder groups. And so cultural competency, digital literacy, critical thinking, perseverance, and relationship building. And then we've started working through defining what that means. Our next steps have been sharing out this 50% portrait. We did have two staff sessions where we were able to share this out and see, is this resonating with you? Is this feeling like the right direction for our students? You know, our staff, especially our school-based staff, has always gave us great feedback on how to rethink the definitions. And so once we receive our community input, we'll take that into account for maybe a 75% portrait. And then by 100%, we anticipate finalizing the key competencies and skills, the definitions, and then we'll begin entering into the implementation phase. And so as many of you saw, cultural competency came up across all of our stakeholders as an area to be addressed, culturally responsive education. And our students especially pushed us in developing the racism reporting protocol that we talked about at the last session that kind of led to this session. But we just wanted to share with you that we are taking stakeholder input in developing the direction of our district. And if I go back to the beginning, you know, around the Equity Office, again, many of the initiatives coming out of the office are being driven by this great amount of authentic input that we're receiving. So, you know, our hope is that this is just a beginning conversation in the Family and Community Engagement, you know, subcommittee, and that you'll let us know what you'd like to hear more about as we're rolling it out. And we'll also keep you apprised of the progress. But the Portrait of a Graduate was, is something that's very, you know, a foundational initiative for us in setting the direction of, you know, the course of the next couple of years.
Thank you very much, and thank you for everyone who's here for all the work that you've put into this. It's really fantastic, and you can tell there's a lot, and so grateful for all the participation and for coming this evening. So I'd like to open it up to my colleagues with any questions. Does anyone have any?
I'll go first. I'd like to just say thank you to all of you, because this is a very important issue, without a doubt. But when we hire diversity of people of color, we've been having a hard time finding people of color that want to come into the teaching profession. So if you guys know people that are certified teachers, send them to Lowell, because we need them. We haven't, Lowell was always a city, I believe, that diversity and racism isn't a, it's not as a big issue to me in Lowell compared to the rest of the country. I look at Lowell High School, 3,200 children when it's running full blast. I look at Lowell High School, 3,200 children when it's running full blast. And to me, that student body right now is one of the, I, I just can't believe it. I mean, my job, my, my whole life I was in the wrong profession, probably. I was a prison guard. I dealt a lot with racial issues. The city of Lowell, we had big issues here back in 2018. We had someone, you know, some comments were made about a young man that just stopped me cold in my tracks. I happened to be on the school committee at that time, and there was comments made about that young man to lynch him, to do all kinds of crazy things, they said, on sending out text messages. And at the same time, we had a problem at Boston Latin School, if you remember. It was identical times. I couldn't believe it. And at the time, the superintendent that we had at that time formed a committee to come in and try to fix things. And that was the beginning, I think, and it still had a lot to do with why Lowell has been not doing that great with education in the first place. We were fighting with each other. And I'm glad we're sitting here tonight to talk about race. There's no better issue, and it should start right here in Lowell. And I got to give a lot of credit that, don't forget when you look at teachers, I look at it this way, 72% of them, and my numbers might be wrong a little bit, are white female. I used to say, "How come they never hire more males?" But, but the problem right now, I think, is bigger than us, and we have to try to lure people of color to come to Lowell. Especially to me, I look at the demographics, I think we need a lot of help with Spanish and white, too. But I'm just so glad we're doing this, and the new man that's in charge under Latifah, I can't, I keep forgetting his name, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I asked you last time in our meeting that you speak Spanish. See, that to me is a key. That's a key. I think you can do great things if we were back at school. We're in the pandemic and we're all sitting here just, it's like a stalled car. We're not moving. But I think if you focus, and I'm pretty sure if I'm correct, you come from maybe Dorchester? See, I've been following you a little bit, and I do like your style, and I just think conversations, talking like we are tonight. I think it's a great thing, and I hope that we continue to work on this issue alone with Project Learn. And I couldn't tell everybody because of the mask on, but when we are hiring people, we got a guy in here tonight, his name's Sean, right over there, Sean with the, he spoke for us. I think he's looking for a job. So if anybody out there is watching this, and not a lot of people watch, you did work for one of my favorite places, Coalition of Better Acre, am I correct? He said yes. I know you've had a few more jobs, and you do a great job there, but you're the only one I know that has a mask on. But Lowell High, to me, I don't want people to think Lowell High's not a great school because I dropped out of Lowell High School, by the way, junior year. Couldn't stand school. I really couldn't. I couldn't read. I faked my way to the junior year till I ran into a Mrs. Keeley. I've been saying this story forever. And she said, "Bob, you're not going to make it in education. Join the Army." I didn't save my life. She saved my life. She was as mean as a bobcat. Her husband was a teacher, he was the nicest guy you could ever meet. But we need leadership in the school to address racism. We're not going to do it outside this school. We hired a new superintendent. A lot of great people are on that committee that picked him. He come in here, he try, he's trying to do his best, believe he's trying to do his best. He comes from Dudley Square area. We can look at him and say, "Oh, he comes from New Mexico." I didn't come from, where I know he come from is Dudley Square down in Boston. And he hired that young man that can speak Spanish, and he hired Latifah, and he hired Dr. Gayle, which I hope they last, but people are going to try to pull him out of Lowell like they do a lot of people. But thank you for your time. Thank you for coming here. I don't know much about it. I'm as white as white can be, but I did live in housings. I lived, I grew up in a housing project. I walked, I walked next to people that were being treated unfairly. I was always a lucky guy. I was. I have a big family, know everybody. I, I had plenty of breaks off, police officers, didn't pay, a lot of times I don't have to pay for a ticket, I can get it fixed. I did that over the years. I've been looking at this now and saying, "You know what? We do have to..." That word equity's been driving me crazy, but it's true. Equity's a great, great word. I don't even know the definition of it yet, but I'm learning, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I just had a couple of comments about the presentation and the work that you all are doing. I think that the timing couldn't be more perfect for doing this work. And just the, the idea of, let's say, the data highlights that jumped out at me, that's, under the family surveys, 71 responded that they valued diversity. Under the teacher survey, 54% believe the school should be supporting cultural awareness. Or for alumni to say, 66% reported they didn't learn about discuss or confront issues of race, ethnicity, and culture in school. It absolutely should be happening, and our people want it. We're hearing from all the stakeholders about gaps in what we're providing, and with the industry piece, what, what the focus is. I love to see communication at the top of the list. I consider that, you know, one of my strengths, communication. But I guess, so I find it all fascinating. I think the work is so important. And I think Lowell has had a long history of strong partnerships. We've been able to get things done because we work together. And as I think it was Ms. Latifah mentioned, this foundation of really building on those partnerships with this focus around what do you want a Lowell High School graduate, graduate to bring to the table? What are the skills that we need? And to see there's a lot of consensus around that is very hopeful. And I guess for me, and what I throw out to you, the challenge is taking that information and turning it into some real initiatives. Some of them are going to be simple, not simple to do, but simple to identify and make as a task, such as, let's welcome more diverse people to our teaching staff, and, you know, so that the students see reflected in their leadership who they can be, who they can become. Some of them are a little trickier in terms of like change in culture or cultural awareness or, those things are a little bit, for me at least, harder to define. And I be, will be looking to see how you're able to transform the information you gather into real actions that are going to have an impact, and how we'll measure that as we go forward. And I really liked the whole overarching questions, which I know were driven by a lot of the information you pulled from the surveys, about how can we provide equitable access to robust learning? That's number one for all our students. And then how do we make it more relevant and engaging? I mean, we've all been in a classroom that you're like, well, you know, just having, you know, a tooth drilled, you know, it just, how do we bring that kind of relevancy to our classes so students want to go to class, and they want to talk about it afterwards at lunch, what the teacher said or whatnot, you know, a discussion that they take with them, they take home with them and into their lives? So I, I think this is great work. I want to give a nod off to Project Learn. I think that you guys were in the forefront of getting us this grant, that we could begin this very important work, and I'm very interested in seeing where you all take it from here and how, again, how we can turn the information we get from the stakeholders into action that's going to have an impact on our kids and our schools. So I thank you for that work.
Madam Chair, I want to make another comment. The HR department in the Lowell Public Schools is, was an issue of mine for the past few years. I basically tried to run on that one issue because when we're trying to hire people, I think it should be more like the voice, you know? Shouldn't even look at the person. Have your back turned to the person and, and hire the best person you can and not worry about the color of their skin. But in the city of Lowell, we need to hire more diversity for our high school, there's no doubt about it. And I believe the way to go about it is stop hiring all your relatives. That's just me personally now, I'm only one vote. Our new HR person in our HR in the past year, I feel we're moving in that direction. It's going to take us time, but if we all get together like we're trying to do here, I believe we can fill that quota of people that we might need in that high school to make it a better place. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So again, I want to thank everyone for this incredibly important work and echo what my colleagues have said about really seeing where there's a lot of crossover in wants and desires, and then also the disconnects between what we want and what the actual reality is for our stakeholders. So just a quick question, you know, we moved this to Subcommittee based on the new reporting tool. So that seems to be an actionable item, really an outcome from this work, and I assume it's really, I mean, you don't have to assume it, it's tied to that idea of belonging and, and where we're seeing there's a lack of, a need for trust-building and relationship-building. So are there some other actionable or items that you have kind of already in place or on the horizon that is, and of course, I know that this work is really just beginning and really always in process, should be sustainable, as you talked about, but are there some other things that are on the horizon that you could just mention here?
Yeah, so I think one of the areas that we're really trying to strengthen is our language access. And that is something that has really grown in the last year, not only with the hiring of our bilingual family liaisons, but also with expanding our resources, our access to language line, our access to translation, you know, resources. And just last month alone, we exceeded what we had spent all of last year, you know, which really shows that our teachers are, are using the language line. And we're still getting used to it, it being in place. They're getting used to calling and reaching out to, to our family liaisons to help bridge the, the, you know, communication between families and, and staff. And so that's a really important piece, that we are trying to let our families know what they can expect, and also our staff know what's available and what we should be delivering. So that's a, a big piece we're focusing on. And then I mentioned the Family Council collaboration, and we do have a, a small grant to support us with this, but really trying to align all of our family voices, build, strengthen, and align. And again, that's, that's across our, our parent advisory committees that are already in place, our City of Lowell Family Council that's already in place, but then also looking at some family voices that maybe need to be brought together, like different language groups. So that's a, that's a strong area. And then just our culturally responsive education, defining what does that mean? What is, what training do staff need? You know, we talked at the school committee about training for parents, training for students, right? Everyone needs to have some common understandings around racism. What does it mean to be anti-racist? What does it mean to have distributive justice, right? That's something we learned about in our, in our training. So these are areas that, that we should see built out through this process. Disproportionalities in discipline, that was an area that we had started focusing on, and then the pandemic hit and that halted some of that work. But that's really looking at the, you know, some, some disproportionalities we're seeing across racial lines in discipline, and really trying to get to the root causes of why that's happening and how do we address it? So, and then Portrait of a Graduate.
Thank you again. So, have a good night.
Yeah, the only other thing bothering me is under the teacher survey, I see 89% of, this might be because of COVID, I'm not sure, but 89% don't meet in person with the student families, like open houses and things like that. We recently, last year, at one of our schools, Stocklosa, their teachers went out and visited their parents. I couldn't believe it. I just never seen nothing like it. They went to the people's houses, and I think we have to do a little bit more of that also. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By Ms. Doherty, second, by Mr. Hoi. Thank you, everyone. Oh, all in favor? Yeah, was that? That's it? Thank you. Have a good night.